Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting of February 28th, 2023. At this time, I take a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Becky. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, well, Gordon's not, he hasn't attended yet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we have our student rep here, Lilia Fagundes. Welcome.
Hi. I want to help everyone on the kids break. Not a ton tonight, but just a few updates for the week. So we have the boys and girls basketball teams competing in the first round of the state tournament. The boys are tomorrow at Brockton, that's the ball, at 6:30, and then the girls are in Sandwich on Friday, 6:30 as well. The trailing team is competing on Sunday at regionals. So we're hoping to advance to states. Parent teacher conferences are Thursday and Friday, which means half days for the junior, senior high school. Mr. EBJAS is March 10th, and the high school will be March 31st and April 1st. So make sure you're there for that. Should be exciting. And one last note about parent teacher conferences from Mr. Clements is that all parents should email to teachers if you can't get ahold of them for conferences. So email them directly if you have questions. And that is all I have for tonight.
And I think you've got boys hockey.
Oh, yeah, they play Thursday, yes.
Thursday. What's that, 8 o'clock at, in Rockland?
I think so, or Brockton, yeah.
Rockland, okay.
Against Abington.
Against Abington? Awesome. Abington? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck on Sunday.
Thank you.
And next up, we have an update from the Educational Philosophy Subcommittee. Becky, that's me. I'm used to Gordon. He's just sitting here waiting. So we have created the philosophy. It was then brought to the school councils where we took in the feedback. And so at this point, we've created what I think is a pretty collaborative philosophy, taking into account all people's views and thoughts on that. So you guys have that in front of you, and we would bring it to you to vote on. Do you want to read it?
Sure, if you'd like to. It's up to you. We don't need, we can do as written.
As written is fine.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve this newly updated educational philosophy of the school district, and as written.
Second?
So moved by myself, Ellen, and second by Amanda. Any further discussion? Or any questions, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for working hard on that. And next up, we have newly updated school committee goals. Basically, we just, I would say we tweaked them and updated some. Amanda, would you like to expand upon that?
I agree with that sentiment, also Lauren, too. I think we, there were a couple of goals here that required some input from some of the other work that the committee has been doing and planning, notably like the timeline for the superintendent evaluation that we've worked collaboratively on with superintendent over the last year. And I think that, I don't know, I think these set forth some lofty goals for us to meet, but I think that one of the tasks that the chair has asked us to do this year is to really get ourselves in order and make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable. And I think hopefully these goals will do that.
And if you would like, it's up to you if you want to vote on them and approve them tonight, or if you would like to bring them back and we vote on them at the next meeting, it's up to you. And also, one thing I put on the back, which was not, I don't know why we never did it before, but you know how we have the operating protocols and we sign them, so I added this section here to have us sign them.
I make a motion to accept the school committee goals for FY '23 through '25 as writ.
Second.
Oh, moved by Amanda, second by Scott. Any further discussion? No? No? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Do you want all these copies? Do you want me to send?
Yes, sure. That would be great. Or we could do it at the end. It's up to you. Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. And then we'll bring them back in August. And next up, we have Superintendent's Corner.
Good evening. So I, over the Columbus Day holiday in October, the class of 1962 came in and wanted to see the building and walk around. And then they caught, Mr. Shea had let them in and allowed them to see the new building and all the great things that this new building brings. And they came about two or three weeks ago and said Sandra Jane Whiting Mola was a member of the class of 1962, and her son came, and the class of 1962 wanted to dedicate a plaque in her name and her honor to be, to be placed here at the junior, senior high school, possibly in the library. I was thinking more of the guidance office because the plaque reads, "She was a fierce advocate against child abuse, co-founder of the organization Outraged, Inc., which was established in 1987. It was the first organization committed to assist families and protect the children who had been sexually abused. This organization supported and educated the families and the children through process of the legal system of Massachusetts. Sandra was also committed and dedicated to the East Bridgewater Class of 1962 Scholarship Foundation." So on behalf of the district, I bring it to you to accept this beautiful plaque and donation. Her son, Dean Mola, he lives in the North Shore, came down to, with the former president of the class of 1962 and came to see me and dropped this plaque off and asked if we would please put it in our building to represent this organization that she founded herself. So I want to thank them.
Thank you.
The FY '24 budget timeline, I just want to go over one more time so that people at home know and that you know. So on February 21st, we placed an ad in the Brockton, the Enterprise, letting people know that the school committee budget hearing will be on March 7th here at the high school auditorium. On March 14th, the school committee vote to certify the FY '24 budget will be taken. On May 8th will be the town meeting at 7:00 PM, and that's when we vote on the budgets. And on May 13th, the annual town elections. And that's just pretty much a timeline of the town and their meetings. My hopes are, is we do have our Chapter 70 funding in. It's the first preliminary round from the budget and from the governor. It hasn't gone through the House, it hasn't gone through the Senate, but we're still on for, my understanding, there's been no movement on the date, so we're going for May 8th. And that's why our meeting will be next week, March 7th.
Have we heard from Selectman or FinCom of when we're supposed to present to them?
No, not yet. I do know that on March 8th, we'll do, we'll be up there for capital requests at 8:00 PM. And I just found that out today.
What time is the?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM next week?
7:00 PM Tuesday in the auditorium.
Will that go out similarly to the school committee meeting?
Yep. Yes, probably on Friday. It'll start. Well, you'll see something Thursday night as a school committee, and then Friday we'll As you know, we are part of the MSBA school project for central school. We will most likely, well, we're going to need a feasibility study, and we have, and our timeline starts on April 2nd of this year. I've spoken to Mrs. Byrne, we'd like to, and obviously the central office staff. We need to set up and start to arrange a central school, school building committee. I will be sending up, Mrs. Byrne is going to send it out to her central school, and the district will set, will send one out together, but she's also going to ask members of the central school if they would like to be on the school building committee. There's no limitations on how many people can be on the committee. We want to make sure that though, that the committee works and there's not too many people on the committee. We need school committee, we need town officials, we need building administration, central administration, and community members. So I'll be putting out a letter as well for the, for community members if they would like to be part of the central school project. This is no means saying that we're building a new school, it's just asking that we go out for a feasibility study and possibly ask the town at a special town meeting in the fall for the funding for a feasibility study, which would be a year and a half to two years out from that time. So I mean, this is a long drawn-out process. This isn't next year or the year after. This is pretty much a five-year process before you even start building or renovating, whatever, whatever they seem fit.
When do you anticipate of having this central school building committee?
Probably in a week or so. We'll start to, we've, we're going to put some information out because April 2nd, the time our clock starts ticking, Mrs. Byrne and I are meeting next week to go over some of the questions that we have to submit for MSBA, just on enrollment, what our grade configuration is, how many teachers, what do we anticipate, what classes do we hold there?
Can I interrupt you for one second? So we have Gordon in attendance now. We were having some technical difficulties, and he's, he's with us by telephone or cell phone, whatever. So do we want to just do a quick roll call vote just to cover our bases since Gordon is now in attendance and he's remote? Gordon, you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. We're just going to do a quick roll call vote, just for ha-has. So Pennington, aye.
Coligan, aye.
To open, open our meeting with, well, because Gordon's in attendance now, so what else? So I'm motioning to open the meeting with Gordon as a remote. So Pennington, aye. And you're seconding it? Just second.
Wait, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, I motioned it.
I seconded the motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Pennington, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Gordon, can you, aye.
McKinnon, aye.
Coligan, aye.
Foster, aye.
Fiddler, aye.
Walker, aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Gordon, for.
You're welcome.
So the next couple of weeks, you'll see this come out of us asking, and Mrs. Byrne will send something out. Dr. Williams?
Great, thanks. Good evening, good evening, everyone. One of the requests was for me to update on the testing window, and I'm hoping it was MCAS testing window, iReady testing window, so I've included both for you. The handout that I have in front of you, and I actually sent electronically to Gordon earlier today, just shows the iReady testing window. We have the three diagnostics throughout the year. We've already passed our fall and winter, and we'll be having the spring diagnostics between May 8th and June 2nd. And then the remaining pages are the MCAS windows for grades three through 10, and anyone that may need to take it beyond 10th grade. So MCAS season is about to be on us. It will start the end of March, and the testing, all the way through the science testing, will be done by the middle of the second week of June. I know Mr. Clements is working with staff now on coordinating schedules, so parents will be probably finding out within the week about the exact dates of the testing, as well as Mr. Paquette said the same thing about grades three through six. So just so that you're aware of the testing windows of all subject areas, and that information on the specific dates for each grade level in each content area will be coming out within the week. Any question on testing? Great. The second handout I have for you is just an update on our English Language Learner program. Again, it's just kind of, I put down a full gamut of information around our English Language Learner program, just to give you an idea of the number of students we have in the program and just how much that program has increased just in the last year. We have a total of 56 students who we categorize as ELL, and we base that on the access testing that we give them to determine their level of need and their level of service. This year, 27 of those 56 students have, are new students to East Bridgewater. So we've almost doubled our population of EL students. I gave you the breakdown there of each school, 12 at the junior, senior, 21 students at the Mitchell School, and 23 students at the central school. In addition to working with our English Language Learner students, we also have former English Language Learners, so students who qualified as English Language Learners in the past, who have scored a four or above on our access testing, then become former Language Learners. So we still monitor them to make sure that they're still making the needed progress, but they don't get the level of services that our English Language Learner students would get. Quite interesting to share is the countries that our students represent. We have 14 different countries that students come from. I'll name a few, Brazil, Greece, Cape Verde, Ecuador, Egypt. So it's great to see such well-roundedness and diversity in our schools. And as you know, walking into the junior, senior, you see the flags that represent the countries where our students come from. Next, I did talk about our access testing. Our access testing actually has recently just finished up. Similar to MCAS, they give us about a window of a month to get that testing done. That testing is done computer-based. It does involve speaking as well as listening, so most often, the access test is given one-to-one, just so that students have that privacy of being able to clearly speak and hear what's being asked of them in the testing. The results will come out, I believe they said it's about May 17th, so we'll get the results about mid-May. And as I mentioned before, students will be put on a rating scale to determine their proficiency levels. And certainly, this is beneficial information for our EL teachers so that they have a way of monitoring the progress students have been making and also make determinations of what skill sets they still need work with. So the next bullet is on our tiered focus monitoring. So just like with special education and civil rights, we also have monitoring that's done with our English Language Learner program. And coincidentally, it's the same exact week. So we will have visitors out for our tiered focus monitoring for English Language Learners, and that's the Office of Language Acquisition that will be out. And similar to our special education, there's outreach to parents with surveys that parents complete. They're looking at our curriculum materials, they're looking at teacher qualifications, they're looking at the procedures that we follow, as well as all the translation and interpretation services that we're offering. So that will be done during that week in March. And it's about a couple months later, about 60 days later, that we'll get that report. And because this is a compliance monitoring, they will be giving us, you know, ratings as to whether we're proficient or above proficient, or if we have areas of needed growth. And we will be expected to report back on progress that's being made to get a proficient rating. So unlike the target review that I had just spoke to you about, that's more focused on just action steps that we can take, this one does have compliance to it, that we do have potentially corrective action that we would be required to report back on. I would, you know, just like to commend Kim Parslow. She's our ELL teacher at the junior, senior high school and sort of our quasi-coordinator of the district. We have three EL teaches. LD Montevan is at central school, and Morgan Luke is at the Mitchell School. But Kim has really, you know, taken the lead on helping to make sure that we have all of our documents in order and making sure that we have all of our curriculum that we need. So I truly appreciate all of Kim's efforts in helping me to coordinate our EL programming for our students. And then at the end, I just mentioned, you know, one of our areas, you know, especially because our enrollment keeps increasing, we keep seeing the need and the demand for improving our translation services for our students. So certainly bringing Parent Square on really helped with that, knowing that when parents complete their registration, they're determining their home language. So everything they get on Parent Square will come through in their chosen language, which has been a huge help for us. But there's certainly still documents that we give out on a yearly basis that we would need to do the translation ourselves. So our report cards, because they come from school brains, we have to translate those into families' native languages, our IEPs, our 504s. So they're, you know, as we have new families come in with languages that we may not already have, documents translated in, or documents that are customized to every student, those then need to be translated as well, as well as interpreters. So anytime we have family events, parent conferences, IEP meetings, any family that is in need of those services, we work with Benoit, which, you know, as Mr. Baylen will probably agree to, they're excellent to work with, they're very responsive, even from the perspective of a student coming down to the nurse's office and the nurse needing to call home, and a parent may not speak English, we can call Benoit, they'll call us right back, they'll get a three-way call going. So we've had, you know, really good luck working with Benoit. It's also been a little bit of a financial increase for us, but, you know, certainly we'll, we'll do what's needed so that all of our families feel connected and engaged with our programming. So it's a little snapshot of what's going on in our EL program. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think I remember you mentioning this, but I know as we think about redoing our website, and I'm not, no pressure, but I think there are things that we can do to automatically translate our website, too, just like Parent Square has, so I'm assuming that's probably on your list of things.
Yes. So currently, our website has the ability for Google Translate.
Oh, okay.
I know it's not the best correlation of translation, but at this time, it will translate through Google Translate. But we are working on enhancing our website, so certainly that is one thing that we want to make sure that all families have access to everything on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While I have airtime, can I just say two more things? The district report cards, Desi always has accountability report cards for every district annually. So the principals are getting those letters out this week, so all families will get their letters from their school building with their school report cards, as well as on the website, there's our district report card. And just to refresh your memory, these are accountability report cards. They have not been counting accountability since COVID for school districts, so we won't get an accountability rating, but it speaks to the qualifications of our staff, it speaks to our attendance rates, our discipline, as well as our standardized testing, our MCAS testing. So with each letter that parents will receive through Parent Square, it will have the link to their school-based report card, as well as the link to our district report card. So those are coming. And then one last thing I mentioned earlier in the year, we formed a parent conference committee, so we will be coming to you, I believe, our meeting in March. Right now, the committee has a proposal in place that's being shared with staff at staff meetings and at council meetings. And then we'll be ready to come to the school committee with our proposal for our recommended changes in our parent conference cycle as a pilot for next year, as well as the calendar for next year, because certainly it'll be impacted by parent conferences, as well as our PD Academy has a couple of suggestions for changes for professional development in the timing of that for next year. So it's a little promo for what's to come next.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Clements to tell us about international travel.
Is this okay? Yes.
I can't hear you that good. You brought guests. Oh, I heard that part. Thank you, welcome. We like guests.
My guests are going to be far more interested than I am. Hello.
Good, how are you?
Good.
So Mr. Silva is here on behalf of Mr. Malice to talk about our Costa Rica trip, and Ms. Sealy is here to talk about our proposed trip to Europe.
So I'll take a couple minutes to talk about Costa Rica. I think the details have already been out to you as far as the itinerary, when we're going, cost, that kind of thing. I kind of want to talk about kind of a, kind of a full circle with it. So I've been here 15 years, and ironically, Kelly Demolesse was a freshman the first year we went to Costa Rica, 15 years ago. And here she is now as a teacher, coming back, looking to take her own kids on an international trip. So I think it's, I think this trip did a few things for her as a student, it kind of gave her kind of a love of travel. And the Costa Rica trip is a big environmental trip, so she actually spent her time in college as an environmental studies major, so, and got a master's in that as well. And now she teaches our AP environmental science. So really, it's the kind of trip that really kind of, I think, inspires kids to do, you know, kind of great things. You know, and as a teacher, coach, mentor for a year, for 15 years, I think this is one of the most fulfilling things as a teacher you get to do with your students, to really get to kind of spend time with them, get to know who they are, and then share, obviously, in this case, science, but also travel and other cultures. So it's a phenomenal trip, so I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sealy, talk.
Sure.
Hi, so here to talk about the Spain-Italy trip. So this is the same trip that we had to cancel for the time of COVID. So we put it on the shelf and kind of waited till it seemed like things were calmer and we could predict better about being able to go. And it was funny because one of my students who's a junior this year came up to me and said, "You take students to Europe? Are you doing that again?" And she is working with somebody who, Courtney Dai, who went on a previous trip with us years ago, and then went on to study abroad in Spain, you know, it kind of sparked a whole interest and path for her, and I thought, it's important to do this. So for a lot of the reasons you said, for reasons of just seeing how the kids grow, that maybe it's their only opportunity to get to Europe, that kind of ties in the curriculum. I know Ms. Glenn is interested in being a chaperone, too. This trip brings them to Rome, Florence, Barcelona, and then Madrid, so they can see the history of, you know, the Roman language, romance languages coming from Italy, and the history of the Romans in Spain, and kind of comes full circle. So I hope to be able to do it again.
I know there's been a lot of conversation around authentic learning experiences, and I mean, there's some hoops that we would have to jump through, but I can't think of better experiences for our students to go on, to study, to learn, to grow, and literally what could be once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for these students to awaken lifetime passions and have a little bit of fun, too.
Do you know, is there a plan to bring either one of these travel agencies to come back to, to come to one of our school committee meetings to talk about it, or no?
I'm sure they'd be willing to.
Yeah. Yeah. Brief presentation.
Did you have specific questions that we could ask them to kind of put something together for?
Well, we could, yes, yes, we could have some specific questions. And then also, we wanted to hear about, well, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure they want to know, too, about the insurance policy and what it entails, and if it covers us, if there was, if a student or someone was to get sick, or how is that, you know, how all that works? What would happen? Are we covered? Are the kids covered? What if they had to stay there extra? What if they couldn't come back? Or who knows?
I can, I can say that both of those, and correct me if I'm wrong, both of those are included in, even though we're working with two separate agencies, those are some of the most frequent and most common questions, and I don't have the exact details at our fingertips, but my guess is we could have that probably even in writing by the end of the week if we needed, but at the same time, yes, they'd be more than happy to come because school committee, student, parents, those would be the first questions on, I think, any of our minds, too, just making sure that we're doing it safely.
And I'm assuming you would have like a parent info night or something?
Oh, of course.
Yeah, so I mean, if parents have concerns in that regard, they would have to ask those questions.
Absolutely.
And all these handouts, I don't know if you had a chance of them, they have a lot of details in them. The, so I know we have this, you put this together, it summarized, you know, the Costa Rica trip, and so the Europe trip is primarily the foreign language kind of type of thing?
Yeah, we usually open it to the French and Spanish students, those are the languages we offer right now, who are juniors and seniors. And then Ms. Glenn had also said that there'd be a lot of the art students who might be interested, but we think of it more as like an upperclassman opportunity, so kids have had a couple of years of language study or some more, you know, art classes and kind of have a bigger appreciation for, you know, what we'd be kind of learning about.
Hey, Ellen?
Yes?
Can I have a question when there's a break?
Yes, go ahead, Gordon, you can go.
Well, in the packet, there was a packet from World Strides, and there was a packet from Educational Tours. Which one are we using? Which one are we using, or are we using both?
Both.
And nowhere in here, the education, I mean, the World Strides is very, very entailed, it's very helpful, but what I'm looking for, as I mentioned before, where do they check in with the State Department to make sure it's okay to go to that targeted country at the time they're looking to go?
I know that EF monitors it themselves, and they don't allow us to go. If there's any kind of state, they might actually do, you know, work with us to reschedule the whole trip.
Did you hear that, Gordon?
No.
Oh, just talk a little louder. Here, you can put it down there.
Can you just tell us what she said?
I think EF, I know, monitors what the State Department's warnings are for travel to different countries, and if it's advised that travelers don't go, their EF will even cancel the trip. They won't let us go, and they work with us to, you know, reschedule or reimburse the students. And EF has also redone their reimbursement policy. So now if you cancel within 45 days, you get 100% of the money back, unless you buy like extra, extra insurance, you won't get, it's like $195 or something. But, and I think that works for all of them. They don't want anybody to go to a dangerous place, it's not good for their business.
So if you were buying airline tickets, going on cruise, you would buy trip insurance if you wanted that additional coverage. That's an op, it's an option for students and families.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the parents meeting, we've typically done in the past, I could speak to a couple trips to France or Costa Rica a few times, we tend to like to have them about it, you know, the April of the year in events. So for example, sometime between the end of this month and the early before the vacation, because usually some of these companies will give a discounted rate to students if they book before a certain timeframe. So there might be, I'll use Costa Rica, they might give a $200 discount on the trip if they book prior to April vacation, or, you know, May 1st, so. And then that gives families, you know, 11 months to somehow, you know, some people just pay for it upfront, some people spread it over the course of 10 or 12 months, so it gives families options of how they want to finance this, this trip. You know, fundraising, there's actually all kinds of cloud fundraising they do, and, you know, students can actually make a website and, you know, share it to their family members so they can all, you know, donate for birthdays and Christmas gifts and things like that. So, so there's a lot of options like that as well.
For the students that would need financial assistance to make this trip possible, do they go through the World Strides? Does it have these opportunities available for assistance? Is that, that's not through the school, right? That's through the company?
Through World Strides? I, that I can't answer. I could find out that information for you. Probably a quick conversation with Kelly, and I could send you an email. That's not an answer.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Superintendent, did you have anything you wanted to add, or no?
I think the only thing is, is that we want to make sure that what we, what we went through during the pandemic, that doesn't happen again. And I would certainly want to see the policy from EF, because we went through this, we were one of the school districts who brought in our own attorney, we got most of the money back, we still have other school districts that have not received any reimbursement, some families that have received because they went a different direction. So I don't want to see that happen to us again. I also know that there are, just like Gordon said, with the State Department, you know, if a child gets COVID while we're in Rome, is that child put in a hotel for 30 days with, and how do we get them back? Who's going to get them? Who's staying? What's happening? Those are my biggest concerns. And I'm sure that, you know, I'm worried here from it, so I mean, we're getting, every, every day, we're getting better and healthier, and we know more about lots of things. There is, there is a war right now going on, so I don't know where Europe is, their thought process, and the State Department people traveling, not traveling, are they shut down, how they going back for? Those are just things, and I think that Gordon brought it up, on the State Department side is, if they cancel, what is the policy? What is the reimbursement rate? And those types of things, I just, I want to make sure that before we go into this, our attorneys certainly review the materials prior to this. And I know that every other school district in the state, like we went through this a bit, three years ago now, I think three and a half years ago, that, you know, our attorneys were online with Nora Healy's office prior to her becoming governor, and they were going back, they were like, we're stuck right now. But they were going after them hard, and it didn't happen. We were lucky to get what we did. I think we probably lost a couple hundred bucks.
I think, yeah, it was just, it was like a two.
And there are other districts and other people that didn't do that. So I want to make sure that, that before we get our families involved, that we just look at all, I think they're wonderful, wonderful. They want our kids to go, they want them to have authentic learning, they want them to experiment, they want them to go to Costa Rica. I just want to make sure that, I don't want to get students stuck in Rome on the first day, or the third day that you're there, and then you're on your way to Venice, and you're not, you're not back. And that student's got to stay.
They actually have it very well spelled out, so I can make sure that I get that, those materials to you. I got a shortened update, just I asked EF to send me, compare it to last time, what's different, and I have a little bit of an update just from today that they sent me to clarify, but I'm sure that they'd be happy to do that, and we'd even have the district's attorneys look at it before everybody goes.
I'm in contact with our attorneys, they will, they will want to look at this, because there's always fine, a fine line, always, and there was a fine line the last time. And our attorneys mentioned that the same thing, we put it out, we give it out, and the comments section just to say, our attorneys will vote both policies, because we don't want you, or Bill, or Kelly Demals to be over someplace and get stuck. It's one thing going to Canada, where we can drive four, five, six hours to get there, it's another thing going across, you know, over the pond, and we can't, we can't get there quick enough. So that's just, those are my biggest concerns. Not that, not that a kid couldn't get struck by a snake in.
Yeah, it could happen.
It could happen.
Hopefully not.
I don't want to say it.
Or get tonsillitis. I said, or get tonsillitis.
My daughter would take one of those.
Yikes.
That's my biggest concern. Now that I don't want the trip to go, my biggest concern is making sure that we don't get stuck, or a child gets stuck, or they're reimbursed.
What, I will work with our faculty to get that information specifically around insurance, disaster plans, all that sort of stuff, and get it to Superintendent Legault ASAP, so we can get it in the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And then, once we have our attorneys look at it, then we can get back to you, Mr. Clements, and then, and then we can take it from there.
Great.
And then maybe we can have EF to, or in this other place, do a brief something.
I just, I wanted to mention this, though, that it is only under your plies, our attorneys. They're not going to say, you can go, I'm not going to tell you that either, but our parents need to know upfront. If this happens, this is what the policy says. Last time we took, not that I would do it the same again, or get the support of the school committee, we took our full responsibility that our school committee's attorney took our responsibility to fight.
So. I don't, so with the interest of having a parent night before April vacation, and attorneys, so can we fast-track the attorney review situation?
There are.
Okay. So fa, we can fast-track that.
Yeah, because we could do it.
I don't think we need them to come into a presentation, it's all right here. We have access to their website.
Well, EF has heard before that.
Yeah, but we can go to their website and figure out what it says. I just don't want to have to worry about scheduling someone to come out here and having them do a slideshow. It's, we have.
You got that.
If you have a list of questions that you want to email us, you know, maybe the next week or so, I know, I'm sure that Deb and Kelly can kind of get together, obviously Deb with EF and Kelly with the World Stride side, you know, maybe try to find some of those direct answers right away.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, yeah, if anybody has specific questions, I mean, and then even you guys could just, when you, because I assume you'd come back once the attorney review is done. We could have a whole conversation then, and then, because I'd like to keep the preferred timeline.
We have another meeting coming up.
The tour company can come, and you can schedule these meetings, but we just want the attorneys to make sure the parents know, that if there is a fine line that says, listen, if you, if you go, Dr. Williams, you're out $400 if you're traveling.
I'm just trying to prevent a meeting that could be an email.
Sure.
Like, I don't need to see this much. I thought it was all right. Will the tour companies be at the parent night?
Usually, in the past, they have not. I mean, they use us kind of as their reps, so.
Gotcha.
So it's really upon us to, as, as the leaders of trips, to kind of really inform, you know, parents, what, what the trip is going to be like, what the costs are, what the expectations are from the tour company. I think, and I'm sure Deb, you could probably say the same thing, in every parent meeting I've been at, a lot of the same questions, about what are going to, what's going to happen if, you know, something happens, we have a family emergency, and Suzie can't go, you know, what are the, and we kind of always refer back to, here's the statement that the legal team of the, you know, EF or whomever has got out, you know, we can look at that.
I agree, you know, by your future.
It's.
Especially now that we're learning.
Travel.
Yeah.
So our next meeting is March 14th, so we should be able to, we should know something by March 14th.
Because we, we should, we were in this position with the DC trip, that we want to vote on it before the parent night, right? So there's not a, like, well, are we going, are we not? Like, we want to, and I think we're very much in support, but yeah.
Because the lawyers are just going to inform, right? Yeah, so.
Well, I'll have that information to, as ASAP, like, it'll be there this week if it's not already in the, in the packets.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's awesome that Mr. Malas was a student and went on the trip, and now he's going to go on this, I think that's awesome.
It's pretty cool, yeah, it's pretty cool. Makes me feel old, though. I was a student, now she's back as a colleague, so it's definitely interesting. Miss, once again, Miss Spanish daughter also came on that first trip, in the, in the second trip, so it was a, was a great experience.
Are any students aware of these trips yet?
Excuse me?
Are any students aware of the trips yet? Is there any?
I, I think it's been, you know, kind of floated out there a little bit to kind of feel out interests, you know, and we started this maybe about a year ago, having the conversation. I would not be surprised if they're pretty well attended, to be quite honest with you.
Scott, you don't think they're watching our school committee meetings?
Sure, it's with, I just, I assume that if there's a bit of a buzz in the school, you might have some kids already excited about joining. I'm sure you're going to get a pretty good attendance at these information sessions.
I think so.
So I agree, I don't, I don't want to be the ones that slow that process up.
Yeah, that's kind of how I.
Sure.
Yeah.
The more time families have to plan.
Makes it affordable.
Budget and fundraise.
But if we come, if we get all, what we need by March 14th at our next meeting, you'll be, it'll be in enough time for you all?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The sooner the better. Is any, is any information that we can get going to change?
Maybe, who knows? We don't know. Maybe it would say something we needed to know or something. I don't know.
I think that if you took a vote this, this evening, to allow the companies to come in, you're a year, you're a year out, like, you might save a couple hundred bucks, you take a vote this evening, if you get the information that you don't like, or that changes the direction, you change the direction. I don't think you're going to hear that. I think you're going to get advice, and I think that the companies have learned their lessons, just as well as we learned ours.
I think, I, speaking for myself, I don't want to be the person that says no to this. I trust that the companies know what they're doing, the teachers know what they're doing. This isn't new. I mean, in the, in the end, it's up to parents to be fully informed, it's just to offer the information that they want, it's up to the parents to buy the extra travel insurance if they want, we'll have the attorneys informing the parents on what all the fine print is. Up to, I mean, in the end, it's parents' choice, what are they comfortable with?
There's always going to be a risk.
Right.
We didn't know in January of 2020 that COVID was going to shut the world down two months later, so.
Right, I mean, and you could change between now and next April for a kind of.
Yeah, I'm, like, let's say, I'm, I'm fine with a vote today to move forward.
Is that emotions, kind of?
Sure, I move to vote now to move forward with this proposal.
Second.
And allow a parent night.
Second. So it's to move forward with the proposal and?
To have a parent.
It's to say, this is fine.
So you're saying yes to the trip?
Yes.
You're saying yes, okay.
After vote call with Gordon?
Uh, yes.
Gordon, do you know what we're motioning?
Did you hear all that, Gordon?
Yeah, I did. McKinnon, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Coligan, aye.
Foster, aye.
Fiddler, aye.
Walker, aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Niasq, I, I just showed up ready to answer any questions that the committee may have. I feel like I've taken more than enough of your time already talking about the, the report, the report has been submitted. I have been in touch with our Niasq representatives, that they have received it. They gave us a couple of just helpful tidbits, like, make sure that this is on your website, and that's on your website, and we're in the process of doing that, and they said that they would let us know when, you know, after they've had a chance to review it and all that.
Is that an expected timeline?
It's usually about two months, I would say, so I, I would anticipate, hopefully by, you know, April on the early side, May on the late side, where we, where we would expect to go. I will tell the committee that I told our Niasq representatives who have been helpful, I said, if this doesn't get us there, I don't know, it will, but any questions that the committee has, I'm happy to answer as best I'm able.
How do you feel? You feel confident?
I do.
I'm glad to see that it's completed and turned in.
I am also glad to see that it is completed and turned in. It, this is something that I am proud on behalf of the district, and I am proud on behalf of the school, and I am proud on behalf of the staff for all of the, the work. And going in, I felt like the biggest project was not to do the work. The work has been going on, and has been happening, the biggest task was to capture the work, and I feel that this report does that.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just thank you and everyone for, for doing the work, and, and you and those who documented it, because that is difficult.
There was, there was some work involved, but yes.
Ellen, this is, this is regard to the Niasq, right?
Yes.
And then, I, I just have two questions. One is, when do we, is it designed so that Niasq sends us back a note and say, okay, you're fine, and we approve you, or what's the next step?
My, my understanding is that Niasq would be in touch with us to say, we have reviewed your report, and either you are back on standard accreditation, when we submitted the four-year report last year, they still had a couple of questions and a couple of things that needed to get done, but at that, at this point, it's a far more comprehensive report than what was submitted last February. So if, for some reason, we have more steps that we need to take to attain our accreditation, which, I don't want to jinx it, I would be surprised, i-if we did, then we would find out at that point.
And by the way, very impressive work and document.
Thank you.
And the only thing I would add is just, we made sure with Gina Williams's help that when we were formulating our draft of our new educational philosophy, that we incorporated those Vikings seeds, communication, collaboration, et cetera, to make sure that they were, they were represented in the philosophy, the updated philosophy, so just want to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I did not plug our evening of jazz that is happening simultaneously right now. So we have all of our jazz groups, and I think we had Stoughton, Weymouth was scheduled to come, but had transportation issues, but we have, I think we've got four other towns that are down there performing right now. The last one is due to go on, our senior jazz band is close, headlining the show at 7:30, so I might try to stop by and see that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thanks, everyone.[1725.63] Bill, should I tell everybody that we'll do two-hour delays every Tuesday now? I did have some seniors request that they saw me going in to meet with Liz today, and they asked if I could put in a request that we start every day with a two-hour delay. So I passed that along.
Reasonable. Lilia, did you like the two-hour delay?
Yeah, it was helpful.
Especially coming right back.
Next up, we have Mr. John Shay. Talk to us about the FY '23 budget.
It's actually a little rough.
Yeah, I'll be very, very cool tonight. Same two presentations that I do at the, from the finance school committee meetings. The results are very similar to what you've seen in the past. We still have an available balance of $359,000 in our non-salary budget line. At this time last year, we had an available balance of a little under $176,000. So as far as non-salary, I believe we are doing great. Haven't had any surprises recently. So I feel as though both our non-salary and salary line, we will be meeting budget. Revolving fund balances are not, again, like the operating budget summary. Not much has changed since last month, month prior. You can still see the sped tuition in revolving line is at a negative. I did last week make an adjustment to correct that. It just hasn't been reflected in the accounting system yet, so next month, that line item will not be, have a negative balance. It will be, it will be zero. One thing to note, our school building rental line is a little lower than previous years. We have, we have had some unexpected expenses that we, that emergency expenses that we've been using. That fund for, the auditorium, sound system, the gym, sound system. So it's good to have those funds available to when emergencies arise. But we are kicking into our high rental season, so that fund will still be, will start increasing rapidly. And that's what that, you know, that fund's for. We rent out the building, and we should use it to fix those places that we rent out, in my opinion. Any questions? Okay, I, typically when I talk about new grants or grants, I give you a one line at a dollar amount. But I wanted to kind of point out something. This is a listing on page three of my presentation. This is one grant. It's called Fund Code 104, Financial Literacy and Planning. You can see I highlighted what we received, what we will be receiving. This is a new grant for us. You know, we've got 300 school districts in the state. 22 school districts applied, 22 received funding. The next one on page four, Math Acceleration Academies grant. That, that is the grant for the math vacation, April and February vacation. Again, 300, over 300 school districts, 32 applied, 32 received funding.
John, what's to stop the other 268 from applying?
Well, I wanted to, you're kind of stealing my fight.
Oh, then withdraw. I'll wait. I don't want to take your momentum.
So I'll answer that question after.
I could tell you were building, I just, I got excited.
Page six is the Fund Code 185, High Quality Instructible Materials Grant. Well, we just received, noticed that, $56,000 in funding. I don't have a nice listing yet because this is really new to us. But again, I believe this is going to be similar as the other ones. Page seven is the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program. This is a new grant to us. Again, 63 proposals were received, 55 school districts received funding. And the one, another one that I failed to include was a grant, I forget who it was from, but it was a Food Service Department. I received a grant for $4,000, and that was for.
Kiosk.
Funding for the new, they're going to start serving breakfast in the lobby. So that was funding for equipment for that. So to go back to your question, I don't really exactly know why. And I know these grants are sometimes complicated to file. A lot of work goes into these grants. It's a team effort. Is there any additional pay for the people that are writing these grants? No. But I think, why do we do it? I think we have great staff here that are dedicated, and some of the people associated with these grants are Gina and her team, Jim McPartlin, Ellen Fisher.
Cam Fox, actually, one of our guidance councils, wrote the financial literacy.
In our guidance department. So it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to track expenses. And I just wanted, I thought you guys should know by seeing this, rather than one line showing you how much we receive, that, you know what? We've got some, we've got some staff here that really do a good job.
Thank you for including this. It does make a difference.
It shows your hard work and the collaborative effort to get these funds in that not a lot of districts are taking advantage of, so thank you.
Right. Well, it's not me, I just do the reporting.
No, thank you, only John. Thank you, everybody.
Now, these grants, are they all for this school year? Or are they like money that needs to be spent this school year? To like, I know the materials would be, like, we'd be able to use them.
Right. The materials are next year.
Some of them, yeah. Some of them will expire at the end of June. Some will go through August, and then some actually will run through the end of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think just to add to that piece that John had said, especially the Acceleration Academies one, because they were offering, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and talking to other districts. Because even if you look at the districts that received them, and John noted this, there wasn't a lot around the area. And when talking to other districts, they spoke about the commitment level of people who wanted to be here during the vacation weeks to work it. And that has not been an issue. I mean, if anything, we're getting, you know, 50, 60 staff members that are interested, and then we're having to choose people based on, we had a whole criteria, you know, based on whether they're teaching math, whether they're teaching in those grade levels, their years of teaching experience, just to try to figure out a system for us to determine who we're going to pick. Because we've done this now a number of times, trying to spread the wealth, that if somebody has done the academy before, then we'll pick new people to do it. So, you know, to piggyback on John's point, you also need people to do the work once you've secured the grant. So, you know, knowing that we have staff members who are definitely willing to put the work in, because we could apply for these grants and then not have people willing to do the work to actually see it through, so.
I would have liked to see that it was more competitive, and I just got the grant over people.
But you got it over eight.
And the amount we got, I think, speaks to also, especially for that Acceleration Academies grant, right?
It's awesome.
Speaks to the hard work and the planning and the staffing and the else, too. Thank you.
Hey, Ellen?
Yes?
I couldn't hear all of that, but it sounded like we spent some time talking about the grants that John had put together some information about.
Yes.
First off, I think that's wonderful. I don't know, I can't recall in the past if I've ever seen such a definitive breakout of a grant, and it gets very helpful to have that. And then to understand the impact it has on what we do during the school year. So for instance, one of the ones that's on top here are the Financial Literacy Planning and Implementation, so we got $4,700 for that. I guess for something like that, I'm just curious. A grant is a one-time shot, so for $4,700, we'd set up the curriculum, and then next year, if there is no grant, we can still keep that going forward?
So for this particular grant, it's for us to have a financial literacy fair for students. So it wouldn't necessarily be investing in materials that we would need to purchase every year. We would be investing in vendors. We'd be investing in the setup cost. We'd be investing in maybe any keynote speakers that would be coming to speak to students, as well as there would be some materials cost, but things that we could duplicate year after year.
Okay, thank you. I think that kind of information addition to what we have here, it's like, okay, what are we specifically in East Bridgewater going to do with the grant? I think that's helpful background information to have as we look at this. And so I just want to thank everybody for putting that in our pockets, helps us to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, and we can do that going forward. With every grant that we file, it would have a program explanation as well as a budget sheet. So then you would know the exact breakdown of how that funding is going to be spent.
Well, in the bigger picture, too, it's, I know what our budget is, but then if somebody's paying really close attention, they'll say, well, wait a minute, we spent more than our budget. Well, my understanding is typically the lion's share of that is grant money that we received, and we were able to spend beyond what the town was saving us, correct?
Yeah, true. It could sometimes just be offsetting costs that we incur as part of our operational budget.
Right. So, for instance, and I'm sorry, I'm remote. It's a lot easier, probably still is painful to hear you guys. You have to listen to my stupid questions, but, for instance, one of the things that I do when John produces the monthly summary here, which is very helpful. For instance, what I do is take the appropriated budget for salaries divided by 26, comes out to $765,000. And then when you, we get the payroll warrant, you'll see it's within a couple thousand dollars of that. So I say, oh, okay, we're dead on that. But when it goes over, it's either grant money or money funded through the food service program or whatever. I think it's really important for us to understand that, because I always get nervous signing a document without really knowing all the nuances to it. And the same goes with the non-salary expenses. Like, I divide that by 26, the budget number comes out to $142,000. So in a given week or bi-week, when the numbers come in higher than that, it just gets my attention. And I, one thing I just want to clear up on that. So for instance, on the warrant we have to sign off on this week, there's $94,000 in transportation and busing. My understanding is that does not come out of our direct budget. The town covers that, correct? Correct. Yeah, okay. So I mean, I think when those of us who are just kind of signing away, some of that, I think it's good to point out that, oh, by the way, these are what these numbers represent, and we need to be informed enough to know, oh, yeah, no, I know that number goes over here, this number goes over there, and this is really the number that's applied to our budget. At least that's my interpretation. Anytime anybody asks me to sign something, I want to make sure I know what I'm signing, so. Sorry to bug you guys down. Those are my questions, but thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. Are you looking for anything, are you looking for anything from Mr. Shay, or no?
No, no, I can follow up with him later. That'll give something to follow, to look forward to.
Okay, thank you. And I do not see anyone here for our public comment section. Oh, were you done with, were you done with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay, thank you. And next up, I would take a motion to approve the Accounts Payable Warrant 35 S D dated February 22nd of '23. So moved, moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Roll call vote is Pennington, aye.
Gordon, do you want to go next?
McKinnon, aye.
Coligan, aye. Foster, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Walker, aye.
It's unanimous. And next, I would take a motion to approve Payroll Warrant 34 P S D dated February 15th of '23. So moved, moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, and Pennington, aye.
McKinnon, aye.
Coligan, aye. Foster, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Sorry, there's only two signatures on this copy. Would all of us need to sign this? I know this is a photocopy, but.
What we have? No, there is one going around to sign, but we have in our package.
This is the older one that we're approving now. It's only signed by just Ellen. Is that okay?
That confused me last week, too. I think that's what we said. We only need two, right?
If that's, if that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to double check, because usually that's, everybody's included.
Do you know why we only got the payroll warrant?
Yes.
So you're saying that's signed by Ellen and Liz? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yes.
That might have been the copy that was submitted to our copying, but we had one that was fully signed, I believe, because that's typically what we do.
Great. Then Walker, aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Ellen?
Yes?
Sorry. When I was told to do all that stuff to try to get signed in, I didn't hear if Liz mentioned anything about the formation of the Central School Building Committee?
She did talk about that. But it's not formed yet. She said that would be in about a week or two or something. She expects that to have, be formed, or she'll, she'll send out information about it.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And next up, I would take a motion to approve Mrs. Kate Byrne's request for grade one students to take an out-of-state field trip to the Biomes Marine Biology Center in North Kings Town, Rhode Island, on Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, and Thursday, June 8th of 2023. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Amanda, second by Scott, and Pennington, aye.
McKinnon, aye.
Coligan, aye. Foster, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Walker, aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. And I would take a motion to, oh, let me start that over. I move that the school committee meet in executive session not to be returning to open session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purpose seven to review and approve the executive session minutes from the following executive session meetings, June 28th, 2022, September 20th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022. And at this time, we'll take a roll call vote. Pennington, aye.
McKinnon, aye.
Coligan, aye. Foster, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Walker, aye.
It's unanimous. And. Was there a motion on that, can I ask? Yes, I just read the motion. Yes, it will be up in a second. Uh, second. Thank you. I'm sorry, I skipped that. I'm sorry about that.
Ellen?
Yes?
I think I found the problem, I don't know if it's even so possible, when you go into executive session, if you want to try and meet on the board. If not, I can just miss it.
Oh, we'll just do the call. Okay, let me finish reading this. So the motion has passed. The school committee will now meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purpose seven to review and approve the executive session minutes from the following executive session meetings, June 28th, 2022, September 20th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.